All right, it is nine o'clock. I think we'll call this meeting to order. If you'll stand with me, we'll have the Pledge of Allegiance and we'll have prayer following that.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in our hearts.
Please remain standing. Pastor Charles Scumble will pray for us in opening.
Let us pray. Most holy and gracious Father, Lord, we come before your presence on this great day. Lord, we invite you into this space. Lord, we ask you today to touch all of us that were all on one accord. Lord, in your word it says, "Where two or more gathered in your name, you will be there in the midst." So, Lord, we invite you into the room today. Lord, we ask you to touch the hearts and the minds of those that are making decisions to better our community. Lord, we lift up those that are lost and we rejoice for those that are found. Father, we come knowing that you are the author and finisher of our faith. Today, we lift up the family of David's service. Lord, let what we do in this planning meeting today be edifying unto you. Let it be a blessing to the family as his name lives on forever. Lord, we lift up Gary Foster to you right now. Lord, in his family, and Lord, we ask you to lead and guide the search for him. Lord, we ask that you comfort the family, take away any fear and anxiety that they may have. Lord, we ask you to bless our community, and, Lord, show us in this holiday season, in this Christmas time, that it's not about the presents and gifts, but it's about the presence of Christ in our life. So, Lord, we just come before you, asking a blessing on those from the birthing center in the hospital all the way to the nursing homes, our police department, our fire department, our first responders, all the way to the last responders. And, Lord, we'll be so careful to give you all the praise and the glory. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Appreciate that. Well, welcome. We appreciate you being here today. We'll move down to public comments section. Is there anyone here today for a public comment? Seeing no movement, we'll move past that. Any additions or revisions to the agenda? Pastor Weitzel, I see your light come on.
Yes, sir. I'd like to remove 6H from the consent agenda, please.
Six what?
H.
6H. I think we have another one too, don't we?
Yes. I'd like to remove 6C and put it on the business items for a little further discussion.
So, 6E would be 7E and 7F. Let's make that 6H. Okay. I knew you had that one, so. Is that it? Seeing no others, the consent agenda then. Do we have a motion to pass? What remains on a consent agenda then?
That's all moved.
Commissioner Hirsch, motion is to accept that. Second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Commissioner Weitzel. Any other comments? If not, roll call.
Commissioner Hirsch?
Yes.
Commissioner Parks?
Yes.
Mr. Weitzel?
Yes.
Commissioner Bogner?
Yes.
Motion passes four to zero. I'm sure it'd been five to zero if Ms. Friesen had been here as well too. Don, we'll pause for just a second here. Go ahead.
This section of road requires four signs on this section of road, and I've had five signs made, and I want to give the family the first sign ever made, and I'd like to do that.
Yes. You want to come forward and do that, Don?
However you want to do it.
Yeah, come forward and present that to them if they will. That'll be fine.
In honor and reverence of David, you gave the first sign. Thank you.
You're missing.
You ever cited today, so I'm taking the picture.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
We can move it to the next one, yeah.
Thank you very much.
Which one?
That's all right, we already approved it.
The 6H you wanted off, right?
Yeah, I pulled the wrong one.
Okay. We actually have some, yeah, I'm going to rearrange that. We have some folks here for that next agenda item, or that 6H we moved to 7F. Cindy, what would you like to, after 7A?
7F.
Um, we can, it was 7F. We're just going to jump down to that one and come back.
Okay.
As 6H, anyway, we'll move into that for conversation. Reno County City of Hutchinson Fights Addiction Grant Program, cycle two recipients.
I will say that I accidentally removed the wrong item off the consent agenda, so I'll go ahead and move that we approve this item, because I didn't mean to pull it off the consent agenda.
Any questions? I'm happy to answer any for you guys.
Did you have another one or you just didn't want to pull it off?
Well, we already voted to approve it.
Okay, yeah, okay. Motion in second, okay. Any other comments? Not? If you want to address that, you're more than welcome to do that.
Yeah, no, we just appreciate your support. We're, you know, we've received class action lawsuit settlement from the state through the federal program, so it comes to the state and then it comes to the county and the city, and then our group is kind of made up of city and county people, and we're trying to figure out how to distribute that in accordance with Kansas statute and all the legalese that we have to navigate through. So, we opened up a second cycle, and this is our second request for funding. It's basically going to go towards the diversion program a second time, and then, is it called Reno Connections? I always mess up the name. So, Reno Connections, which is kind of an employee that works at the public library, that's where it's stationed now, and that person gives us a warm handoff for people that are coming out of addictions to be able to have... You can imagine how challenging it would be to like, get a driver's license if you don't have any documentation, if you don't have a birth certificate or social security card. How do you navigate these things? And so, what we're supporting with this fund is someone who steps in that place to kind of walk them through this process so they can get back to being citizens again, and that's good for all of us, because healthy citizens are taxpayers, the circle of life. It all happens in a glorious way. So, that's the gist of what this particular round of funding addresses and supports.
By the way, would you share your name and who you are?
Oh, yeah. My name is Phil Oxer, and I'm a pastor at Reno County, of course, yeah. At Crestview Bible Church on the northeast side of town.
Okay, thank you. I forgot to ask you that.
Any other questions?
I don't think so. Is there?
Commissioner Weitzel, I think you had a question about funding with Prairie Star on the first round, so I think we sent that in July, but there was an update. There was a question about their budget because they'd only spent a certain percentage of that, and so we followed up with them. They were trying to hire a nurse practitioner that was going to be focused on that kind of work, so I don't know if there was a particular question we could try to answer with that.
No, I just was curious about an update on it, and it sounds like someone was sent but was inadvertently not forwarded to us, so.
Yeah, okay. Well, we'll, yeah, I think Randy and Patrick have everything. If there's something you need in particular, we're happy to help.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. Anything else? All good?
I think it's good. Thank you, Pastor. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
There was a motion in a second. Anything else? Not? Roll call.
Commissioner Hirsch?
Yes.
Commissioner Parks?
Yes.
Commissioner Weitzel?
Yes.
Commissioner Bogner?
Yes.
Motion passes four to zero. Let's go down to 7B EMS Station Three Arlington Funding Request. Randy, I'll let you take the lead on this one.
Pulling the agenda. So, earlier in a previous meeting, there was discussions of Arlington EMS Station, and we were using federal funds, so there's $583,000 in federal funds. Most of that, 483 of that, is the ARPA funds. The other $100,000 is tribal assistance funds. It has the same qualifications as ARPA, pretty much, so the commission had previously authorized allocating that amount going toward the Arlington EMS Station. And at that time, the county commission, I believe, stated $610,000 was the lid for the Hutchinson Regional Medical Center to, they're in charge of EMS, they run the EMS, Reno County EMS, and there's that cap on what to spend, as the hospital did some, and Dave Johnston's here to talk about this and answer a question, so, but the estimates were $750,000 when they went to Landmark Architects. $715,000, I don't know if the land is also on there, but the request is to allow the EMS, the hospital, to move forward with the project with a not to exceed of $750,000, as this is not at the hospital. The agreement between the county and the hospital states that the county is responsible for all costs of the buildings, maintenance, that are offsite. So, this will be, end up in the county's name, and the county will have to pay for whatever amount is to build this, so it's needing your, I guess, approval to move forward with the process. And Dave's here to get into more details. Dave, if you have anything to add?
Good morning. Dave Johnston, Reno County EMS Chief. Hey, thank you for looking this over this morning. So, Randy went through most of it pretty much in detail. The last time I was here on this project, we were given a cap of $610,000. We've contracted out with Landmark Architecture on that and have initial designs back, which you're able to view. The cost came back higher. We understand it's not out of line with other projects of this size. We were originally concerned of costs upwards of $300 per square foot. The request is to move the lid on this up to $750,000, and that number includes a buffer. You'll see the estimate that came back from Landmark, about $715,000. We have another $10,000 to $15,000 going towards land. What this allows to do, if we have that cap that we're able to operate within, we'll go out to bid right away with this so we can get the project moving. I do want to just reassure you that we've been good steward of the funds given to us. We have no intention to go that high, but we would certainly like to have a buffer within that. I met with Commissioner Hirsch and Bogner about two weeks ago to cover a lot of this, and I hope that they can account for that we're being good stewards of the money that you are giving us to maintain and run EMS here. So, I'll stand for any questions you might have.
Well, I have a question. I'll just say it really needs to move forward. You're putting two units out there.
No, so we have two projects running at the same time. We are going to put one unit and some disaster equipment at Arlington, the downtown station here, which I think we meet on the 30th for architectural plans. That one, we're going to put two ambulances at.
Well, there's a great amount of time when I see your Arlington unit sitting at Pleasant View, and that's a little concerning to me that we're not covered well out there, and so that's why I wondered if your plan was two of them. I didn't think it was, but, so, we'll look in the future at some other plans, hopefully, but I think you're seriously uncovered out there at times that concern me a little bit for people's safety and health, so.
Well, and I actually just happen to have response numbers for that out there, and we've done very well, so 67 responses out in the Arlington area. Our response time has been 3.7 minutes on average, and that's down from six minutes last year, and the reason is, is we're keeping that unit in Arlington unless we run out of trucks.
But I mean, how far does it run out from Arlington?
It could run out up to the edge. It runs down, we helped cover Pretty Prairie, down into, close to the south end of South Hutch, but wherever Station Two might pick up. I think the other thing with that is, once we have the second crew downtown, that's going to pick up a lot of those calls to the south.
Didn't you purchase land for $5,000 in Arlington about a year and a half ago? Was that for something different, or?
We didn't purchase that. I think the hospital, EMS was talking about purchasing that land, but...
Because I know we had approved...
It's $5,000 for the spot for the fire station in Durham.
Yes, the fire station in Durham.
Okay, all right. Yes, I got confused.
I think, Don, you helped me on this, but the 714 did not include the land and the land preparation for the base to put the facility, the building on.
That is correct, and in the estimate from Landmark, there is some contingency, but we just want to ensure that we have enough contingency with that additional buffer.
And what I have found is, in our discussion, Don, you can probably help me, but we have stressed the efficiency there, the not being really careful on what we spent money for on this, and they have, the hospital and Dave have been really good to work with. It's good to know that we have, when Pretty Prairie built their station, so we've got some idea of what their cost was a year ago, and they've been really good to work with. I feel better than I did originally, and that Dave will probably hear that, because we had some pretty good, serious discussion over cost and what type of facility. Don?
Well, I'd say we went over it pretty close the other day. I liked seeing it stay where it was, but apparently we were, I guess, wishful thinking. In today's world, with the inflation the way it is, this is about where it's landed, not where we'd hoped, but I still hope that we can crowd that under the seven, at least. When we get some final plans, we'll be able to surely do some looking in.
I feel the same way, that they can, once you get, once you get the final plans, you can decide upon what quality and what goes into that and where the cost savings could be, but still be, have some longevity to the interior.
Yes.
Mr. Weitzel?
Is there a current building that's going to be sold, or?
We're currently in a station that's up by, we kind of co-share with the fire district out there, so the fire district will take over the space, I believe, in there, and they've been gracious enough. Fire District, the current ambulance that we have does not fit into the station we have, so we're filling up a bay over in the fire district's garage over there.
I don't have anything. Any other questions, comments? Not? We got a motion?
Move to approve the, I'll get that up here where we did it. I move to authorize Dave Johnston with Reno County EMS to proceed in full design and bidding of the ambulance project with a cost not to exceed $750,000.
Commissioner Bogner seconds?
Yes.
Randy, you might speak to where the extra money's coming from. I don't know if you said that or not, just publicly.
Okay, separate from the ARPA and tribal assistance money, the additional funds that will be needed will come out of the county CIP reserve fund, and there's adequate funds to cover up to $750,000.
Okay.
I would kind of like to encourage that when you get the plans in and you've got the interior and things figured out, that we, as county, have a chance to look those over with you and discuss that.
Absolutely. I'll have another meeting scheduled for as soon as we get that in. We get some bids coming back on.
Anything else for Dave?
No. Merry Christmas.
You too. Merry Christmas, Dave. Thank you. Thanks for your work on this. Well, then, roll call.
Commissioner Hirsch?
Yes.
Commissioner Parks?
Yes.
Commissioner Weitzel?
Yes.
Commissioner Bogner?
Yes.
Motion passes four to zero. 7C is the methane capture agreement.
Chairman Parks, I'll just introduce this topic and then the speaker, because Representative from Spark slash Metalarc is here to kind of give you guys his presentation and answer questions you might have from him. The county's been looking for a while at the possibility of whether or not we could have a company capture our methane at the landfill. We've set out an RFP, we got some responses, the responses were reviewed, and Metalarc Spark was chosen as the best response, so then we went into whether or not we could hammer out an agreement with them, and we began working on the legal framework of that, and it's ready today. It would be passed in two parts. If you guys decided to move forward with it, one part today, then some final details and some legalese would be gone over and agreed on next year, but the actual details of the project, Mr. Norman Herrera is here to discuss, and then you can ask me questions and him questions and decide what to do with it.
Chairman Parks, good morning. Commissioners, good morning. Thank you for your time today.
Say your name and stuff.
Sure, my name is Norman Herrera. I'm Chief Executive Officer of Spark Renewables. Appreciate your work on a holiday week. Merry Christmas and happy holidays. You have a presentation in front of you that we can cover. It is about 15 minutes worth of time, but the main things that you'll have to review are an easement agreement that allows for a plant site, a pipeline easement, and a construction easement. stressed the efficiency area, not being really careful on what we spent money for on this, and they have, the hospital and Dave have been really good to work with. It's good to know that we have, when Pretty Prairie built their station, so we've got some idea of what their cost was a year ago, and they've been really good to work with. I feel better than I did originally, and that Dave will probably hear that because we had some pretty good, serious discussion over cost and what type of facility, Don.
Well, I'd say we went over it pretty close the other day. I liked seeing it stay where it was, but apparently we were, I guess, wishful thinking. In today's world, with the inflation the way it is, this is about where it's landed, not where we'd hoped. But I still hope that we can crowd that under the seven, at least. When we get some final plans, we'll be able to surely do some looking in.
I feel the same way that they can, once you get, once you get the final plans, you can decide upon what quality and what goes into that and where the cost savings could be, but still be, have some longevity to the interior.
Yes. Mr. Weitzel?
Is there a current building that's going to be sold, or?
We're currently in a station that's up by, we kind of co-share with the fire district out there, so the fire district will take over the space, I believe, in there. And they've been gracious enough, fire district, the current ambulance that we have does not fit into the station we have, so we're filling up a bay over in the fire district's garage over there.
I don't have anything. Any other questions, comments? Not, we got a motion?
Move to approve the, I'll get that up here where we do it. I move to authorize Dave Johnson with Reno County EMS to proceed in full design and bidding of the ambulance project with a cost not to exceed 750,000.
Commissioner Bogner, seconds?
Yes.
Ready? You might speak to where the extra money's coming from. I don't know if you said that or not, just publicly.
Okay, the, separate from the ARPA and tribal assistance money, the additional funds that will be needed will come out of the county CIP reserve fund, and there's adequate funds to cover up to 750,000.
Okay.
I would kind of like to encourage that when you get the plans in and you've got the interior and things figured out, that we as county have a chance to look those over with you and discuss that.
Absolutely. I'll have another meeting scheduled for as soon as we get that in, we get some bids coming back on.
Anything else for Dave?
No. Merry Christmas. Have a.
You too. Merry Christmas, Dave. Thank you. Thanks for your work on this. Well, then, roll call.
Commissioner Hirst?
Yes.
Commissioner Parks?
Yes.
Commissioner Weitzel?
Yes.
Commissioner Bogner?
Yes.
Motion passes four to zero. Seven C is the methane capture agreement.
Chairman Parks, I'll just introduce this topic and then the speaker, because the representative from Spark slash Metalarc is here to kind of give you guys his presentation and answer his questions you might have from him. The county's been looking for a while at the possibility of whether or not we could have a company capture our methane at the landfill. We set out an RFP, we got some responses, the responses were reviewed, and Metalarc slash Spark was chosen as the best response. So then we went into whether or not we could hammer out an agreement with them, and we began working on the legal framework of that, and it's ready today. It would be passed in two parts. If you guys decided to move forward with it, one part today, then some final details and some legalese would be gone over and agreed on next year. But the actual details of the project, Mr. Norman Herrera is here to discuss, and then you can ask me questions and him questions and decide what to do with it.
Chairman Parks? Good morning. Commissioners, good morning. Thank you for your time today. Thank you.
State your name and stuff.
Sure, my name is Norman Herrera, Chief Executive Officer of Spark Renewables. Appreciate your work on a holiday week. Merry Christmas and happy holidays. You have a presentation in front of you that we can cover. It is about 15 minutes worth of time, but the main things that you'll have to review are an easement agreement that allows for a plant site, a pipeline easement, and a construction easement. And so that's really what you're here to vote on. We are working on public-private partnerships throughout the region, and this would be, as described by Patrick, a relationship where we would invest in equipment to process your landfill gas to meet a pipeline specification by Kansas Gas Service to inject in their system. And so throughout this presentation, I can go pretty quick, but the main items for you to consider are, again, an easement agreement that allows us to lease land from the county to develop a facility that takes landfill gas and makes it high-quality, high BTU methane. And so what I would go through, and thank you for guiding that, again, landfill gas is pretty interesting. I always like to give the analogy of a banana peel that you put into the trash in a municipal solid waste landfill would turn into methane in about five to seven years through the decomposition of something that's organic, that decays with compaction and rain and other trash. You go from something that's aerobic to something that's anaerobic, that creates gas that can be marketed and harvested, and that's really what that first slide has. From there, I would go to, the way one would do this, your landfill today already has horizontal collection wells and vertical wells. Our proposal would be to continue with the county's approach to the wellfields and take what's infrastructure is already present there, and in this slide here in green, process what gases there through a cleaning system that would take away other impurities like nitrogen, oxygen, H2S, CO2, and clean up to that pipeline gas quality that Kansas Gas Service today would allow for. And so in those three circles you see there, you're doing the first circle, primary treatment. We would do secondary treatment and advanced treatment with more equipment there alongside you on your property. On the next slide, this is an example of an end use of natural gas. The natural gas that comes from a landfill can go into a vehicle like that trash truck in Garden City. It can go into residences, it can go into industrial and commercial users. So our gas, once processed, would blend with the gas that's already on the system and be able to use all sorts of uses. So Kansas fuel for Kansans, people here in Hutchinson and Reno County would be able to then process that gas to meet other gas uses. This last slide here just talks about some of the environmental benefits outside of the investment in the facility and the revenue received by the county. You're also attacking the third largest human source of emissions, which is landfill gas in a municipal sector, and that's really what that slide represents for you. Next slide here is just some background on Spark, Spark Renewable, Spark Natural Gas. We're based in Oklahoma City. Take our history from Chesapeake Energy. Did a lot of work in landfill gas, and you'll see here from this map, some of the projects that we have, I would say that every star there is a public-private partnership with either counties, solid waste authorities, or cities just like yourself where they're doing this type of work. And so just the name of the cities, that's Coleman, Alabama, that's Manny, Louisiana, Lawton, Oklahoma, El Arena, Oklahoma, Enid, Oklahoma, Pryor, Oklahoma, and then up to your north in Lincoln, Nebraska. So you'd be joining those other cities that were doing the same exact work in a same type of partnership structure with same type of agreements, like your easement agreement with those facilities. Go to the next slide, some just pictures of projects. That's Enid there, construction underway. Next slide is Lawton underway. Both of those sites, we invite you to visit if you want to see more firsthand of how our work looks. Those will be open at the tail end of March of next year, March 25. This equipment is processing equipment, so again, you're taking something that is 50% methane and turning it into 100% methane, nearly 100% methane through processing, which would be off-site, operated by ourselves, at, again, no inconvenience to your staff, to Megan and her team, again, separated by a street and separated by our own operation that would manage this type of facility. Last few slides here for you. I will cover just the agreement itself, and so there's been a bit of a process working with you. We've gotten to know your staff since 2022. We've done site work on your facility, just in conceptual drawings and images and feedback. As Patrick mentioned, you issued a request for proposal in September last year, and here we are today at the final leg of the race to establish this easement agreement. What you see there is, on the screen, is also just a representative sample of where we would sit there at the intersection of, you know, Mohawk and our plant location on the easement agreement there that's on the north-south corridor. Next slide is a slide that really just has a table and a graph that speaks to what's happening today at the landfill. Today, you're doing roughly 400 to 600 standard cubic feet a minute of landfill gas through your flare. By adding density with the help of your team, we can grow gas generation. By growing gas generation, that means more royalties to the county and to its citizens, and it shows the potential of future growth that would happen with expansion. As you expand and add cells, we follow you along with wellheads that we would install at our cost. From there, we'll go to the next slide, which is really just the meat and potatoes of the deal. Today, again, you have a grant of an easement, right? As Patrick mentioned, we would enter into a gas rights agreement for your gas and your attributes. You would have an 1875% royalty on your attributes, your brown gas, and we would pay the first year of royalty payments once we've completed all real estate activities, things like permits, landowner acquisition of right-of-way, and beginning of state permits for our construction activity. In the end, we'd agree to pay a floor on the minimum revenue per month, and that's in there at 37,500. And you have some estimates of what revenue would look like in the future in year two, year five, and year 10, and these are all examples of taking the gas, processing it, putting it into a pipeline. Our gas, from an environmental standpoint, is not $4 gas or $3 gas like you would see. It's closer to $25 to $35 gas in the market because of its renewable attributes, because of its green presence in the market that one could establish. And so the last two slides here are really just, it's a little bit of detail in a short document, but it talks about the 18 months that we would take on to begin a project. This equipment to process requires engineering, design, permitting, manufacturing and construction, and final commissioning. And so as we sit here a couple of weeks before the end of the year, the goal would be to have a project in service in 18 months, and so that really takes you to July of '26 as a project that we would celebrate the opening and commissioning of. And so the last slide is really what you have in front of you. It's an easement agreement for an easement with the project team that's capable of executing, that's doing it in states to your north and to your south and to your southeast. And so Commissioner Parks and all commissioners, we thank you for listening to this presentation, here to answer any questions and appreciate your interest in the project.
I do have one. I've been hounded locally about somebody that there's an incentive if we close this up by the end of the year that helps defray some costs. Is that something we're going to qualify for?
Yes, sir. Yeah, by you voting on this, the Inflation Reduction Act expires at the end of this year.
I want to reiterate, not hounded, but I shouldn't say that to the person that's done that to me.
No, no, no. Commissioner.
They have a deep concern for that, and I wanted to see some.
Absolutely. Yes, sir, yeah. By us entering to an agreement, we're able to manufacture equipment offsite that would be serialized and put in service here, and so that's the reason we're here today. The last meeting of the year is to cover this with your approval. That equipment can be placed here in 18 months and have a project that affords the benefits of that credit.
And secondly, fire suppression issues, any concern for us as a county response or anything that would be extra from normal?
Yeah, no, we would have a first responder communication that'd be part of our permitting. We would do a Hazop training with your staff, and we would staff this facility with four to five FTEs, a plant operator, plant manager, assist on well tech, and really be responsible to work with your first responders on the training available to them. In future presentations, Commissioner, we'll have our engineers and we'll have our experts to describe some of the shut-off valves, some of the way our equipment works in a safe and orderly fashion, and what we do to train staffs of what we do as well.
Okay, because, I mean, you know, we're installing a bomb. I know nobody wants to say that, but I want to make sure that, go ahead.
That kind of ties into the legal aspect, Commissioner, in that the methane's there right, you know, right now, we're currently having to deal with it, and currently, we have our consulting engineers, SCS, tells us how to do that safely, and we have confidence in it. So the current risk of an explosion or something, we feel confident it is being controlled by, you know, we have a plan in place through our engineers. The way the legal agreement is going to be structured going forward is that the final say-on-any-risk issues or design out there needs to be up to the county because we are responsible, it's our landfill, we are responsible to Kansas Department of Health and Environment to make sure it's properly run. So that's what we're working on. If we can, we're trying to, we are structuring this agreement in a way that if they can harvest this methane and make some additional royalty for the county, great, but the final, the final decision on everything has to run through the county because it ultimately is our responsibility, and that's just the reason why this process has been a little bit slow, because on the one hand, it's great, it's kind of looks like an extra, it's like, you know, an extra oil lease, it's extra revenue, but we just have to be very cautious to make sure that the county still stays in control of our facility.
Thank you. Appreciate it. That's all I have. Anybody else?
Yeah.
Yes. Commissioner Bogner?
At what point are you purchasing the gas? If I'm understanding this right, you're essentially, you're on our property, but you're off the landfill site itself. Where do you buy the gas at? Where do we deliver it to you at? What I'm getting at is, your people won't be over there interfering with our staff out there at the landfill. Where it goes in the air now, it goes to you.
That's correct, Commissioner, correct. Yeah, we're not on the mountain. You have an existing flare today, and we would tie into that existing flare. We're off-site, and.
And who owns the pipe going from that site to your site?
Yeah, so we would have an interconnect from your flare to our plant, and that pipe is something that we would install. We would meter it at that point, and then we would take on the processing of that gas at that point, all the way till it enters the Kansas gas system.
But we would remain in charge, our people would, of what the wells produce, because of our liability to the state. We don't want anybody dictating anything.
Yes, the dictating. So what we're, the pause is, we would be sharing access, there'd be shared access to our wells, because they're going to need to do, because their pipeline would run on our landfill. So that's kind of where the, so you're absolutely right on the issue here, is just when this gas agreement's going to say, okay, you have access to our wells at these sites, we understand you have a pipeline to them, we understand you're going to, their people are going to maintenance and check that pipeline periodically, we have to give them that permission, but we also need to kind of restrict their access because we don't need, we don't want, we just have to maintain control of the landfill, so their access points and their access routes have to be defined, and that's what we haven't finished yet, and that's what we have to get nailed down in part two, because we just, it is, it is very similar, you're, if you have a farm, or if you have a real estate, a piece of real estate that has an oil and gas agreement, you are giving up access rights and some control of that land to the oil company in return for royalty, and to some extent, and to a large extent, we're doing that too. We just want to make sure it's very controlled because our landfill is so, so important. But you're thinking of, but yeah, in terms of metering, it's metered at the well, and it goes into their pipe, that's, it goes into their pipe, but it's on our land, so that's why they have an easement to the well sites, and then we will have to work together. The main facility they have is on our land, but across from the street from our, rest of our facility, so we feel like there's separation there, but there'll be a pipeline leading to that facility. Agreed, Norman?
That's right, Patrick. Yeah, so Commissioner, one thing that we stipulated to is the personnel of Reno County would administrate the wells, would dictate when wells are expanded, when wells are added or subtracted, and that wouldn't be our responsibility, and so that's one thing that, it's your staff that would be responsible for that, not ours.
Megan, you feel comfortable?
Yeah.
All right.
Anyone else?
Yeah, Commissioner Weitzel?
Okay, so when we talked about this last time, there were costs that we incurred from the, or in addition to the, like, we talked about some extra costs and things. Did we get the agreement written so that that's not a concern anymore, or?
Like, extra cost in terms of, there's no, we're not paying for any of this. There's, we did hire an additional law firm. If we go forward with it, we can't, if we go forward with this, we're going to ask for reimbursement for Metalarc from it. If you guys say no to it, we'll just have to eat that cost because we can't ask them to pay for it if we don't.
Oh, no, 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 but, you know, but when we were talking about the agreement before, there was, there was concern that the money that we were bringing in might not actually.
No, no, all the, all the costs for facilities is on the, is on them, it's a royalty. I mean, we just get a, we get a percentage of the production, but we're not paying anything financially to make this happen.
Okay.
Just giving up the access.
I believe you said that about 50% of the product that you receive goes out and 50, about 50% is washed or cleaned. Where, and I see there's a revenue stream for that byproduct. Where does it go? How do you handle it? What, I mean, it can't go into the pipeline.
That's right, yeah. So you have a system of a thermal oxidizer that really is, it's, it's something that processes the gas and went to a flare, and so your 50% methane is cleaned up to be close to 98% methane, that goes to Kansas Gas Service. The other uses today are flared, they're combusted. In the future, one could consider CO2 as a possible business venture that would, you would be able to participate in, the nitrogen business, hydrogen, you know, there's other uses that aren't present today that would be present in the future as part of that by, that stream of gas, but today, it's flared.
Okay. Now, you also mentioned, you know, natural gas prices are $2 to $4 today, okay? You mentioned this stream is going to cost $25 to $30 MCF or whatever.
MMBTU, right.
That money is, that difference between current prices for natural gas versus methane gas has got to be picked up somewhere. Is that federal government coming in and paying you to do this?
Yeah, so think about, first, we, we're producers like a vertical or horizontal oil and gas producer is, so that $3 is the $3 gas that we would get. On top of that, you have another stack, and then that is that $25 to $30. Who's picking that up? The federal government has a renewable fuel standard that obligates certain parties, refiners, to buy something called RINs, and so RINs are required to be purchased by obligated parties, and one type of RIN is one derived from landfills, and so the ultimate purchaser would be the obligated party that has to buy this production. Who are obligated parties? Your majors, your Exxon, Shell, Chevron, BP's of the world that are refining products that as part of refining, they also have to buy these RINs as well, and these RINs are what we're producing at the landfill once it enters the pipeline. So the ultimate buyer would be an obligated party that has this obligation to buy these.
So as long as that in effect?
The renewable fuel standard has been in place since, I believe it's Bush 41, and it's consistently been present from that administration to the current administration and future administrations. But yeah, that's the program that we're a part of.
It's a whole lot like carbon credits.
There's some similarity to that, yeah, there's incentives present related to a renewable fuel standard that requires obligated parties to buy what we're producing.
So where does the royalty money get divided? After that uptick or before?
After, that's why this project would command that range of anywhere between $750,000 to $1 million with the floor of 37.5 a month. And so that happens to you on the gross side, and so prior to our expenses, prior to our operations, the county receives a royalty of what we receive from the brown gas and the environmental attributes that are derived from the project.
So we participate in both sides of it?
You do, yes, sir.
Okay. Is that on a percentage?
Yeah, and that's, some of these details in concept, we agree with, and that's why we haven't gotten a completely finished agreement, because we ran out of time to just make sure that the legal language reflects everything that's being said here.
Did you, yeah, Commissioner White?
So is this going to increase the cost of gas to our residents? Like, selling, selling the gas at a higher price to Kansas gas? Is that, because I know wind, it was my understanding that putting the wind farms here would actually increase the cost of electricity to Reno County residents. Is this a similar deal, or is this money they're already spending anyway?
Yeah, this is adding another inlet to their system, and that price that they're going to pay, they're going to use an index, and that index most likely is an index like the $3 index, they're not paying the $30 index for the gas. That's the environmental attributes that are there. So Kansas gas, purchase gas from the landfill at an index that's matching every other molecule that's there, which is the brown gas molecule.
Anything else? Not, thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you, Commissioners, for your consideration.
Do we have a motion? One way or the other here? Mr. White?
Yeah, I'll move to accept item 7G, or 7C as presented by staff.
Second? Seconded by Commissioner Bogner. Further comments?
I think the county's been looking at this, off and on for years, with Morton several years back, and it's unfortunate that it costs so much to do it.
Would it be right to ask Megan to speak on this before we vote? Just, any thoughts?
Um, no, I've just been working with Patrick, I mean, it's been a long process. I've put a lot of my time into this, working with people like Norman, and we've met a couple times, you know, it's a big decision for the county on your part, so I just want to make sure we have all the correct information and want to protect our Reno County residents, because that's, we're very proud of what we do at the landfill, want to make sure we're doing the right thing and have the right information for everybody.
And there's no concerns or...
Like Patrick said, this is just the very, very beginning stages of what we're doing, so I mean, a lot can change between here and now, well, we need to just make sure all of our eyes are dotted and t's are crossed and...
You said two parts, this will get it rolling so we can find that out, but any further thing? Not, I want to say something, thank you. I understand you had a surprise inspection the other day and passed with flying colors, so we want to continue to maintain that, I think, I hear that concern up here too, that we want to continue to maintain a well-run landfill, so thank you, your staff for that, appreciate it. Nothing else? Thank you, Megan, appreciate it. Yeah, roll call?
Commissioner Hirsch?
Yes.
Mr. Parks?
Yes.
Mr. White?
Yes.
Mr. Bogner?
Yes. Motion passes four to zero. 70 residential housing incentive agreements. Mr. Partington, would you like to brief us real quickly on this?
Sure, I'll start, but then I'm going to hand it off to Patrick, as he's worked on a lot of the details.
Right.
Over the past year or so, the, we've talked about housing being a major issue, and so we've been talking about creating a neighborhood revitalization program countywide, and then a homebuyer incentive program. The NRP, Neighborhood Revitalization Program, is, takes place in a few cities in Reno County, I believe it's Bueller Haven and City of Hutchinson. The county currently recognizes Hutchensons, but not the other two for tax, the tax rebates. So Patrick has worked with the Appraiser's Office and various people and myself to come up with a countywide plan that addresses the need for, or the possible need for NRP. NRP really is, it's kind of an, the way it works is on an increment basis, property tax, a payer will pay the full 100% of property tax, but if they invest in a residence or a commercial, residential or commercial property over certain amounts, the additional amount of property tax that they pay above the starting amount, the base amount they could pay now versus after their improvements, that amount is, they pay it, and then if they qualify, it gets rebated back to them. And Patrick, do you, I'll let you, you wrote the...
Yeah, I mean, NRPs, like Randy was saying, I think that's just one thing to always educate the public on, is your, if you improve your property, the tax, the value of the property has gone up, so your taxes go up to reflect that a little bit. And so then, if you have an NRP, you, the taxpayer gets the rebate as a way of saying, hey, we are, we want to encourage you to fix your property up. Otherwise, people, there's sometimes taxpayers have a bad taste in their mouth when they invest in their property, increase the valuation, and then in return, get a higher tax bill. So we are rewarding them with the NRP, with the rebate. The way I've tried to, I've drafted this, or tried to draft it based on the feedback we've gotten from meetings with the Commissioners and some meetings with Mayors and other comments, there's a lot of different ways people have structured NRPs other places. What, one facet of this one, we tried to do is have a different rebate rate, a better rebate rate for residences that are valued currently at under $250,000, and then, and then it phases out, and then, so we have one tier that's houses under $250,000, get a rebate of 100% for five years, I believe, then between $250,000 and $500,000, they get a phased-out rebate, and then if the residence over $500,000, they do not qualify, because they are not really in need of incentive. Those numbers are just kind of something I talked about with the Appraiser in trying to figure out what, what the median house price looked like in Reno County, which is a difficult number to just pull out of thin air. The other thing about NRP is, it's really, the good thing about NRP is, the way this is structured and the way NRPs can work, it doesn't target, it can be used for new development, but it really can incentivize an existing residence that needs reinvestment. So you, sometimes you will have a neighborhood where 10 of the houses are nice and two of them could really use some improvement, and NRP can target that in a way that some other programs don't really do. And then like Randy said, the exist, what we did was, we carved out, we recognized the existing cities that are offering NRP, and we are, for them, we just want to match what they're doing. Their neighborhood, if they've just determined what their neighborhood is, we're just going to follow that, and we're going to match up their plan. And then for the rest of the county, we've kind of set this default option. I've had some meetings with the Appraiser's Office and the Clerk's Office about how we'd administer it, we feel pretty good about that. We also offer some commercial, commercials available in this, but it has to raise the value, I think, 10% to qualify, which kind of, kind of acts as kind of a, yeah. So, yeah, minimal investment of $25,000 or 10% for a commercial, so for a commercial property qualify, it'd have to be pretty substantial, it's really targeted at residential as drafted. And then we also list, there's a list of things that you want to improve, roofs being something you don't want to, usually roofs do not qualify for an NRP, because a roof is just kind of a, that's just something you have to do to have a house, so. That's kind of my quick rundown, I'm sure there might be questions, this is something, then we can talk about the other incentive also, this is an option, this is not something, not every county offers these, you're not required to do it, we've talked about housing quite a bit over the last couple of years, and we've been looking, you know, including NRP, so we wanted to bring it to you guys this morning.
Yeah, it's my understanding, Patrick, if I read this right, it's not only, this would be countywide, not just within the cities?
Yeah, that's correct.
So that, that all county residents could utilize this, even those that aren't within the boundaries of a city.
Yeah, including, you know, resident, you know, rural or whatever you want to call it, outside the county residences, and some commercial properties could qualify. Now, if, one thing, just in the mechanics of it, as you're edu, if you're educating people, we have to get a pre-application and then a post-review to prove what actually got improved. And for our places, for our cities that have building code requirements, that's pretty easy usually, because you have to do a pre-inspection, but for the, any resident that doesn't have to do a pre, a building inspection, would have to fill out an application in advance. So that's just mechanics, but it would still be eligible.
So you got to get it done before you start anything?
Yeah, the application really is just, we need to establish, have the Appraiser's Office establish what the baseline value is going in, because it's all based on the idea that you've improved the property, and so we have to have a, we, before you start the improvements, we really need to get the information, get it verified and checked off that you apply. And there is, I mentioned that, just my experience with this, is frequently people try and apply for it after they've started an improvement, and that's a real headache for the Appraiser's Office to administer. But as long as they come in beforehand and say, hey, I want to be part of the NRP and fill out the paperwork, you know, we'll work with them.
Okay. Thank you.
You want to? Commissioner Hirsch?
I just read their, commercial property at $25,000 is eligible, only hangover $25,000.
But, as written, it says they, they need to do an investment of $25,000, so yeah, it would, you know, it could be any size of commercial property, I think I took, and we haven't talked as much about commercial, it was a minimum of $25,000 and a 10% increase in valuation.
Yeah, both, yeah, I understand that. And that's where I have a little problem with agriculture, property shall not be eligible. They're a business, a very high dollar value business, and I'm not sure, we talked about this a little bit ahead of time, but if someone wants to put up, I agree with it, plus it has to increase the total value of that property X amount, 10% or whatever. But if you're going to make it eligible for a business at $25,000, I don't know why one would exempt agriculture property from not being available for the same thing. You put up a 40 by 100-foot shed with concrete floor and an office in it, you got a lot of money in it. And so while it may or may not increase that farmstead, it still has to do that, but to blanket, to me, to blanket not being eligible, I don't, I've got a problem with that, because maybe you can enlighten me more since we talked.
I don't know, I don't know that I can give a perfect answer, but the NRP program is really, the law underlying it talks a lot about blight and remediating blight, which is usually considered a condition that you find in more populated areas. Generally agricultural, I've seen some blighted agricultural land certainly, but that's a little bit of a stretch sometimes. That was one of the thoughts, as I looked at other NRPs. But I understand your argument, and I appreciate it. I was just drafting based on feedback I got from the Mayor's meeting and some other people, and doing my best to present you guys something that's open for revision.
I just, it almost says that an ag producer out there is not a business in my, and I think, I just would like to see that, I understand the blight, we've talked about that, and that's been a problem so far, but I just, I think that, that that's, in my mind, can you get around this blight thing? And this is something I've wanted NRP for a long, long time in the county, and Daniel also, as we've talked with him, so.
I don't usually advocate, I am a fan of NRP in other places I've worked, so I think it's generally good. The criticism, if I was devil's advocate, the criticism you always hear is that people get rewarded for something that they would have done anyway. So that's usually, I don't know, by, my lawyer training makes me present both sides of an argument, I, maybe I shouldn't, but that's, that's the pushback that I have heard from other people is, not, not just for ag, but that's one area, like, are you incentivizing people to do something they weren't going to do, or are you giving a rebate to someone for something they were already planning on doing?
That's an argument that will go on forever, isn't it?
There's no right answer to that one, I, people, you can, everyone has their own opinion on that one.
Would we be in any, in any legal trouble if we allowed agricultural properties? Like, is that something that would get the county potentially in trouble with this NRP?
I'm not sure.
Also, there was one other item, I didn't see, or maybe I skipped over, and it costs the county some money to be able to do this. Have we determined a fee for this? Most other counties that have it have a fee to handle the paperwork.
Yeah.
Because between the Clerk's Office, Treasurer's Office, and the Appraiser's Office, there is some time involved, so. And then we talked about that, that would be, would be taken off of, you wouldn't have to pay for it, but it'd be taken off of the, if it cost $100, it would be taken off of the rebate, is that...
Yes, I believe I got that covered in here, I can't remember where it was, it should be in there, because it wasn't my...
I know most, most counties do charge a fee for doing that paperwork.
Yeah, and they usually, like you said, root...
It's not...
Tax it out of the rebate usually, usually, I believe there's like a $20 application fee at the beginning, and then, shoot, now you're, I need to make sure that's in there, because I think it is, I couldn't tell you where.
Yeah, I think I saw the original initial, but... We've got a lot of rural properties as well as, as rural city properties that certainly have, have a need for this, because of the, of the age of the houses, as well as who owns some of them, that haven't kept them up.
And I'm okay with not charging a fee, I don't know how the rest of you feel, but, you know, I'm okay with not charging for something like this.
Well, I mean, you know, you're just, you're just reducing the incentive if you, the incentive you charge people on the back end, I did think that's something...
Well, the other, the other side of it is though, that the people are used and are gaining way more than that back, and why should the rest of the population that doesn't have a chance to use it, fund, fund it for them? It takes time, it takes, I've been through it in a city years ago, it's, you know, I'm okay with the fee, simply because if it's worth that to you, and you're gaining that much, the rest of the population shouldn't be funding your deal.
Mr. Plank? If you'd like to come up and address this issue too, like Mike from...
Mike, Plank County Appraiser, Patrick, I just want to offer a clarification maybe? Farm sites, farmsteads can make use of that, right? If they want to, if they want to remodel the house or add to the house or whatever? I think we're just talking about like, if you wanted to build a new barn on the ag site or something like that, right? That's, was my understanding.
Yes.
So I just wanted to offer that clarification, that farmsteads can still take advantage of it, so, okay, I just want to make sure.
I think, because it says residences.
Okay, yeah. I don't know if there's anything else I can answer or not, but I just, I thought maybe that was confusing, so I wanted to speak up.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Yeah, I, you know, the only other thing I just, since we're discussing this and the other one, Randy and I go to a lot of meetings about economic development and the issues of Reno County and housing. And then we also, at the KAC meeting, there were some presentations about housing. And just statewide and I think countywide, trying to figure out how to motivate people to build new houses and repair their current houses seems to be a hot topic. And this is, this is designed toward that, so that, that would be a reason to do it.
I would just suggest that you certainly look at a fee. I agree with what Commissioner Don said, that, that the general tax-paying public shouldn't be, shouldn't have to support someone who's getting an incentive like this when it's their, it's quite a few dollars that they can get back from the increase in valuation. So whether it takes an hour's time or two hours' time, that should be included in that.
I would agree with that statement as well. I mean, there is some time put into it. For what you're getting back, yeah, it's a pretty good return. And I don't know anybody that couldn't, for this kind of money, if they're gonna remodel it, we put up 20 bucks or whatever it is.
Would you like me to make that change and bring it back to you at the next meeting or something else?
I think we need to get started on an NRP myself, so.
Yeah.
But
Could we motion again? Could we add that to it with the motion, that it'll be in there?
Yeah, absolutely. I think, Michael, sorry. What I've seen in other ones is something like a, a percentage of the rebate is what gets charged as a fee, like 1%. Do you know what I'm talking about, Michael? No? Okay. I guess if you're gonna motion in a fee, we kinda need to decide what you think the appropriate fee would be.
Well, he pretty much knows what it's gonna take to push that through labor-wise, I would think, wouldn't you?
Just like an upfront application fee, is that?
I think what, I think I have an upfront application.
Oh, that's what I thought, yeah.
What I would suggest is if you want to do the, tell you how the rebate check, rebate check's $2,000 and it's gonna be 2,000 less, 100 or something like that.
It takes you a half hour clerical work, half hour clerical work to do one of these or an hour?
Probably most of our time would be spent with the inspections, right? And so that's, that's getting a pair of appraisers together, getting them in a vehicle, going out on sites. I mean, it's probably a minimum of an hour, depending on where in the county we're going, right?
For two of them in expense.
Yeah, right, so. Two what?
$200 fee or $100 fee, what do you think would cover your time, Michael?
Two appraisers for a minimum of an hour, yeah, 100's probably enough.
So you, you would
We got somebody here that ought to know.
Just ballparking it.
And is this gonna be, is this gonna be an extra expense or is this, like, are you, are you already paying the labor for that? And this would just be
Yeah, it's folks who are already on the clock or whatever, right? It would just, it would be an added duty for them and they'd have to stop whatever they're doing and go. Because on these things, we want to get that done, so we're making a special trip out that we aren't necessarily planning on.
Right, but it's, it's not like extra money that we would have to prove for your budget, it's already here, okay.
Say 100? That what you kinda figured?
You wanna make a motion?
Yeah, I, until we know more. But I
Well, you know, maybe in another year, if it looks like that's not right, we could amend it or something too. So I mean, if we have some activity on it, we can watch it and see what happens, yeah.
I would move to approve the
Commissioner.
I have, I just want to clarify that with the NRP program, that does then, I think, agree to what Bueller and Haven have to take part in their rebate program, their NRPs. Currently Reno County does not recognize those, so the property taxes that they're being rebated, I guess it would go forward in new homes that those two cities have, but it would then go in with those, with Haven and Bueller that currently do not recognize. So I just kinda wanted to bring that up. And then any city, South Hutchinson, Pretty Prairie, they would have to opt in to take part in this for their part of the taxes.
Any of the small communities as well, if they want.
Any small cities, they would have to pass whatever ordinance or resolution that, that's their legal authority.
We, we can only, yeah, like Myers said, we can only rebate the county portion of the taxes, which as all good county employees know, is just a small portion of the property taxes collected. But, but if a city participated, we, we could join, they could join in with us and then the rebate would be bigger to the person getting it.
You still got a motion?
Maybe you better work on a motion, okay? Sounds like
I, I think if, if the only change is the fee, you could make a motion with the addition of a inspection, a post-inspection fee of $100 added to it. And that would satisfy what Mike, what we're all talking about.
To be taken out of
To be taken out of the rebate.
Would it be a post, post-inspection or pre-inspection so you, so you lay your baseline?
Yeah, it'd be both, right?
Both.
And I, I think the 100 would cover it.
$100 from the rebate and because we are inspecting it pre and post, yeah.
And then what's the thought on the agricultural thing? I mean, is there any desire to remove that from this based on it being legal?
I would love to remove it, but it doesn't sound like we might be in compliance.
I guess it's really, it's not a, it's a political decision with, with the legal flair, but I think it would be maybe prudent to just run with this for a while and then talk about amending it in the future. Because I think a program like this will need, you know, will need review.
Or we can, we could do it subject to legal approval or something like that, couldn't we?
That, that's, I don't know how, how I could ever define that out for you, to be honest.
We can revisit this if we find out more.
I was gonna say, we could always table this until the next meeting so Patrick could look into it. If that's something that you guys have a desire, like the agricultural pieces.
If we didn't review these kinds of programs and see if they're working. They have to be looked at again in the future.
No, I was talking about the agricultural portion.
Your will's a turnin'. I'm just thinking here. It'd be nice, but you're a little worried about the legal ramifications and the, because it's more toward residence.
We, we really want to focus this program as much as we can on, on blight and residential growth is really what it's, what it's intended for. That, that's, that's a statement I'm confident in.
So a total of $100 is what you're looking at? $20 pre, $80 post, is that something that works?
I think, I mean, it is basically like Commissioner White's was pointing out, it's already in their budget, but we were just asking, you know, just you had time, a little fee to show that the appraisers are gonna have to look at these before and after. So just to re-get that time and not have, not put that burden on the rest of the tax, other taxpayers.
How about this? I'll, I'll do this and we'll see where it goes. I'll, I'll move to table this until the next meeting so that way, legal counsel can look into the fees and the agricultural provision.
So we bring it up again and, and make a decision at that time after we have a little more information?
Yeah.
Now that's Well, I'll second it so we can discuss it.
Okay.
Thank you, sir. No, I said thank you.
Appreciate it.
That way you can insert the fees to be taken out of the, that way you can insert that and also give us a review back on, on the agriculture part.
Yeah, I mean, there's, that will be on the agenda next meeting then, if that's what you guys want to do, it's, it's
I don't want to put this off, but I think maybe John's got a pretty good idea that
I have this from time to time.
Do you? We'll find out. I, I really appreciate all the work you've done on this, Patrick, because, because when it first come up, we, you know, Rice Counties and we went from there and your experience with Barton County and, and other counties around as well as cities, helped put this together and I appreciate it.
I might need a roll call if nobody's got anything else. I, I don't have a problem with holding it off personally, but I do think we need to get it rolling.
Yeah.
We have some other people that are looking at using this incentive, I know, so. And again, I think it'll have to be massaged along the way to make it work exactly how we think it should or it need, to meet the needs of the public, so.
Yeah, both, both Pretty Prairie and South Hutch, are in our need of
Well, I think there's others that'll benefit from it as well, so.
Yeah, Nickerson, you know.
Yep, yeah.
Roll call.
Commissioner Hirsch?
Yes.
Commissioner Parks?
Yes.
Commissioner Whitezel?
Yes.
Commissioner Bogner?
Yes.
Motion passes four to zero. Well, let's move to seven E, which was six C.
Commissioner, we still have the homebuyer incentive program. It was under the same item.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
It got separate from the NRP.
You're right, you're right. I tried to move past.
Yeah, I combined these. I wasn't sure how the discussion would go because they're kind of just related to housing. Commissioners, as we've discussed, we've been looking at housing quite a while this year, quite a bit of time has been discussed on it. We had some conversations earlier about what the county might be able to do to incentivize new housing, new residential housing. And we had some different thoughts on that. And what I've tried to do is draft an agreement that would kind of do a lot of things related to that. What this would be is a, a grant program that goes to the buyer, not the developer. So it goes to the purchase, they go, it would be delivered to the person purchasing a newly-built residence. The residents would have to be approved in the city, approved in, permitted in the city it's in. Or, or if not inside the city, it does a permit, just be inspected by the appraisers. And it goes to, you have a $5,000 grant to the buyer. They have to prove that they are either new to Reno County or have never been, or are a current Reno County resident who has not been a homebuyer. And then we capped the program at 150,000 if approved. And there's a clawback if they sell the house, the residence, within five years of receiving it. To make it, and then we've asked, the, the way this would be administered would be through the chamber because the county, to be completely honest, we're really good at paying bills, but we don't pay them very quickly. And I do not want to be put between a Realtor trying to close a housing contract and cutting a check.
Per unit incentive?
Per unit, if it was a duplex, so a duplex would, each duplex would, would be qualified as new residential housing. So that's, that's why we use units sometimes, just to make clear, so there's no confusion about what exactly, it's fairly broad. It would have to be a new residential unit, trying to read, yeah. If it's in the city of Hutchinson, it has to be part of a little bit larger development. But if it's in one of our other areas, it would not have to be developed necessarily in connection with the lot.
So, so we're talking about 150,000. I've gotta get this straight, for a whole development?
No.
Or, or for a single house?
The 150,000 would come from Economic Development Fund and would go into the program.
Program.
And then each, each individual purchaser, you know, would be a, the cap would be 5,000 if you, if you qualify. So it goes into, so the big grant, so we're just establishing the budget as being that much. And then people who qualify would get it. I'm, is that 30? I guess that would fund up to 30 people if I'm doing the math in my head right. So again, we had some discussion about new residential development and there were some concerns about how to get that to the right people. So one, one suggestion was to make it a homebuyer grant and then the discussion of new to Reno County, first-time homebuyer, all those things. We tried to check a lot of boxes in this, made it a little bit complicated, but that's what we draft, that's what I've drafted.
So will this be a deposit straight to the chamber of $150,000 to dispense? And if they don't use it all in one year, then what?
Then they If they don't use it all, they need to give it back to us. I think I have a review Yeah. Two years, I gave it two. It, it ends up in review at the end of 2027, so two years to see how it goes. Obviously, if they spent all the money, then the program's over. If they don't spend all the money in 20, by the end of 2027, they give the rest of it back to us.
Why are you I would, if you don't mind, I'd like to hear from you whether you think this is a valid incentive or not. Just to hear another perspective on this for all of us.
Thank you, counsel, for taking the time to listen to me about this.
Name.
I'm sorry. Strong contract. I, I brought this to the county several, probably a month or so ago about improvements to, or assistance with housing. And I just want to kind of clarify some of the opportunities that are on the table right now for homebuyers in a new subdivision. We have what they call an RHID, and I don't know if you've know of that name, what those, but that's a reincentive housing incentive district. It's been in place for several years, several of the communities around Hutchinson have used it. Typically, they're gonna be in a smaller town, Dodge City's used it, there's been a lot of Emporias using it. So what it consists of and, is, we put together, yeah, we put together the information in a, I don't know exactly what you call it, but it's, it's, it's a fund that is set up and the, the city, so when we build a new house in a new subdivision, we have to take the subdivision and we put it in to this RHID, this infrastructure district, is what I call it. And the city and the county and the school and the college in Reno County have already said, hey, we're gonna give you no property taxes or very little property taxes for 20 to 25 years. Now, that's been done. So the county and the city and the, and the schools and the college have already agreed that, say, 95% of the property taxes that the homeowner pay on their new home will go to the county, but the county doesn't really get to keep very much of it. It goes to pay for a bond to put the infrastructure in. So that's how the new subdivisions now are, are able to do that. And, and they don't have special assessments on their lots. Because in a new subdivision, historically, we would go in and we would build the improvements and then we would bond out that project and there'd be special assessments on that lot for 20 years. Typically, those special assessments nowadays are running about 200 to 250 dollars at least a month. I always use a monthly figure because it sounds better than when I shock them with it's 2,500 dollars a year. So it, it, that's how their improvement, so you're already putting money into this project. This is the first RHID to be done in Hutchinson. Because we own a considerable amount of lots here and, and we haven't had the opportunity to, to do an RHID because it took us so long to get rid of the lots that we have. So this is our first one. And so I'm just trying to make sure you understand that you already have incentives in place that now are being used. We also got some grants on this project from the state. And that typically goes to my, my buyer. And we've done this all over the, all over. MIA, it's moderate housing income, it's not low income, it's moderate housing. That means we, we sell to a lot of, our history is we sell to a lot of teachers. We sell to a lot of policemen, firemen. Just your working, working people. Typically, they're married. And, and that, that is our buyer. The problem that I had on the project that we're doing up at Plum Creek is our infrastructure cost way over what we were thinking when we first started budgeting. When we first started budgeting, we were thinking that project was gonna run us about 1.1 million dollars. Well, it came in when we got Well, it came in when we got all done after three years of engineering, just unbelievable. But when we finally got it done, it came in like 1.75 or something like that. So it was way over budgeted. So I did get the city of Hutchinson to go ahead and put a lift station, it was about $300,000, on special assessments. So these lots will have special assessments, but they're very small. And they're about $25 a month. And, but the problem that I'm having on my subdivision is that my infrastructure is so much more. And we are out of pocket on a lot of money. And, and so somehow I have to get that money back. And what that's going to do is that's going to raise my lot cost. And the MIH money and the grant money that we have is not supposed to be used for infrastructure. So when the county was able to give the city infrastructure money for a new subdivision that the city apparently is going to open up, same price range of homes that we'll be building. Anyway, that's when I uncovered that there was funds available. So I can't say, and I appreciate you all taking the time and putting the time into this residential housing growth agreement, but I also, I've been doing this here for a long, long time. And I've built a lot of subdivisions in Hutchinson, McPherson. I've done these grant homes all around the state. But the problem that I have here is, let's say, for example, when they put in here that it's a first time home buyer, the bulk of the people that we're going to sell to are not going to be a first time home buyer. They have different programs that are available. Right now, this, I don't know if it's just on banks, but banks have first time home buyer money for home buyers that they give them a $15,000 discount right now. Now, I don't know how long that's going to last or how long that's going to be here. But my problem is, is out of all of these MIH homes that I built throughout different communities, I just finished up Tenham and McPherson. I don't think one of them was a first time home buyer. So if you're wanting to get houses built in the community, we have to figure out a way to, to make it affordable to the buyers. Now, at one time, Dan Demme, when he was back, when he was on City or County Council, he wanted them to put a cap on the price of the home, which back then was 250,000. I don't remember. But, you know, price of everything's gone up. So the average houses that we build on a MIH is, are typically going to be between 225,000 to about 325,000. That's going to be the average range of the homes that we're going to build. What that will do, that will move people out of existing homes in Hutchinson, Kansas, and they will move into those homes. Let's see. Trying to think of the other couple of things that I had on here. I do like the idea of giving the homeowner the money. You don't have to give me the money. You know, I do think that that's a pretty good idea to give the homeowners the money if you choose to come up with some kind of a program to help the homeowner. But, and I also like the idea of having a clawback clause because a lot of the MIH grants have a clawback clause. They're set up on a tenure, but those grants are probably in the $20,000 range possibly. And they have a clawback clause, so they're just prorated. So let's say you have a buyer that if you do put this program together and they are able to use the county $5,000 grant, I would say if they moved out in three years, just say, hey, if you move out in three years, we expect $2,000 back. Because you can put an attachment on the house when it closes that, you know, they're kind of making sure that you will get that money back if they don't live there for five years. So that is possible. I guess really, other than that, I think for me, it was a little confusing on the duplexes because generally duplexes are on a, what you call an investment property. And an investment property, part of the problem we have in Hutchinson, Kansas, is nicer like duplexes. And because there are professionals that come to town and they're looking to live in a nice duplex. Well, that the cost of construction nowadays, that cost of that duplex could be, you know, with the price of the lots that we're going to have to be at, they're probably going to be about 1,500, $1,600 a month for rent. And so everything that we can do to try and find funds to, for that is helpful to our buyer. Now, again, I will say, I wouldn't be standing here if my project wouldn't have gone that far over budget because the RHID is a big incentive and it'll be one of the first ones in Hutchinson. The problem with RHID in a smaller community is you have a certain amount of time you have to get those houses built in order for the RHID to work. You can't put an RHID and have it be building houses in eight or 10 years. I know that Haven, I don't know if they've asked for, requested an RHID, but I know that they've been working around trying to get an MIH grant and some other things. But they have the possibility. I know that Haven is trying to put together something and I don't know if they're able to do an RHID, but it is a little bit challenging for a smaller community. I know I kind of babbled around on my words a little bit here. It's hard for me to explain in a short period of time how important it is and how, for the community. So I guess I'll be quiet and see if you all have any questions for me. Because I know I just laid a lot on you.
That's right. Mr. Weitzel?
Well, I did have some of those same questions. And so I talked to some bankers here in town. And the ones I talked to, one in particular seemed to think that the way this was structured, it would be different, like the people that qualify for this wouldn't qualify for the other first time home buyer deals that are available. And she seemed to think that it would be, it would, that they would be able to find the people to move in with something like this, is what, you know, is what I was told. Because I was thinking, you know, hey, this is just going to stack and, you know, and then it's not going to be really available to people because, you know, there's, because the way closing works and stuff like that. But, so, but, you know, after talking to her and then some of the other people, I was told that they think that this will help people get into those newer subdivisions. I mean, they're the money people, you're the building person. So, you know, I mean, you know, sometimes there's a difference of opinion there. But that was what I was told, was that something like this would help get people that, get people into these homes.
Our goal now is, you know, we have a certain types of floor plans that are handicap accessible and, you know, they have to have certain things required by the state in order to qualify for the MIH. So, you know, my goal is to keep them affordable to my buyer. And that's it. You know, and we built them and we focused on entry level housing, senior housing in Hutchinson and other communities. We build and do the same in McPherson. And we've done, we've worked in other, a lot of communities, not all just around here. And these are very successful. But many, many times when we go into smaller homes or smaller communities, Lyons, for example, you know, we didn't have to buy a lot. And there it was really, really quite a good deal. In McPherson, they had to buy their lots. But anyway, that's, that's, I guess where I'm at. I just, I just, and the other thing I like about this, I kind of think it's a good idea to have the chamber involved on working on this because they're pretty involved with other businesses. We've talked to them about different incentives from the other people that are looking to hire and for, you know, trying to get employees to move to Hutchinson. And I know that the chamber's been working hard with different companies on that. And so I like the idea of everybody just working together. And all I can do is just ask and tell you what I appreciate, but I'm just saying, I just don't know is $5,000 for the first, I mean, I know my first house wasn't a new house. I don't know how many people, when they go out to be a first time home buyer, I don't know that many people that are able to go out and buy a brand new house for their first time. And I'd like to see the money. I don't want to see you just put the money out there and it not be able to go to work for what you're wanting to have when you're done. We're here to grow the community.
Anything else for Mr. Strong? Okay, thank you, Jim. Appreciate it. Any thoughts on that?
And this is just kind of also that draft initial we've been talking about for a while. Katie Fallon from the chamber, I don't know, not to put you on the spot, but she is here if there's any questions that she may have on.
Any questions I have?
Or questions for Katie, or comments by Katie.
Katie Fallon, Economic Development Project Manager. I can attempt to answer in lieu of Deborah since she's out. What can I help with?
I don't know that I.
Just, I mentioned that because we kind of say the grants going, or the money's going to the chamber. So then they would administer it and have the application process.
I will say, separate, he mentioned the bank grants. There are first time home buyers grants through the banks as well as second time home buyers that's a lesser value. So you could set up a system, not to step out of place, but that is, as someone who will be purchasing her first home in March and looking at those first time home buyers grants through the banks, there is a second slot for those who are purchasing the next one with the five year live in, live in years. And then if it's, if you move out early, it's on your lien. But, yeah. So, yeah, we'll be administering, happy to do that, just not sure if you have any questions about that for me.
Just some thoughts, you know, I got, I get kind of tasked with drafting sometimes. And what I'm really just trying to do is take all the thoughts from this, your guys' meetings and other meetings and try and make amends to something. One of those thoughts was to promote first time home buyers. The other thought that's in here is out of first time Reno County home buyers because if somebody sold a property from outside Reno County and had that equity, they could buy a new home in Reno County. What we're trying to do is, at the end of the day, is try and figure out how to incentivize new builds without just targeting one, you know, without necessarily always targeting one development. And this is something that could be available to Haven if they got their subdivision gone or wherever, really. Yeah, we can revise it to add second time home. I mean, we can do all sorts of things. We're trying to figure out the best path forward as, I think Randy and I talk a lot, traditional economic development was always focused on jobs. And what we hear at all of our meetings are that real estate, residential real estate is what we really need. We have jobs, we've accomplished that, but we need.
Thank you, Katie. Appreciate it.
Sorry, just we like you hanging there, I'm sorry. Yeah.
I understand as you want, I don't mind.
I just wanted to get all my comments out while I had the microphone so I can turn the conversation back over.
I, I see that it's based upon site built with Ford Foundation. What made you just settle for site built?
Well.
I've dealt manufactured homes, both Haddon, well, they've got new names for them now, but it was Haddon UBC at that time. And they're treated as real estate when they're put on a foundation.
I'll be honest, what I did to start, to start putting this thing together was I looked at some other programs that were in existence. Some of them were from the state. And that's, I know there was a comment about the duplex language. But I think I took that from an existing program that was targeted similar, but I was like, how, I was trying to come up with a starting, the starting point of what's a definition of what we're trying to do. And this is something I pulled from something else, to be honest. I know the debate about manufactured home versus site built, that's another one of those ones that a lot of people have opinions on. It can be modified. I mean, it's just, I took that from a, most, a lot of subdivisions that are building infrastructure, roads and water and things look at site built, I think is a fair statement.
And one of the restrictions on that could be also the fact that it has to be qualified as a residential. And that's debate, that's put between the width and the length, has to be a certain amount. So it has to be residential style. I'm just, just curiosity because I've put, I've put really high dollar homes out in areas.
I think there are good builders in the area that build, that don't build site homes.
And I think, we said. Sorry, Jim. Yeah, and I think I have to agree with Jim that I didn't buy, you know, I haven't, still haven't bought a new home. I just chose not to. But, but I don't know a lot of people starting out that buy a new home. And that is what the other homes are going to be in the market for. And then having set in a breakout session here not very long ago, that is the cry is for housing development across the state, but they're looking for alternative methods. And I think, one fellow stood up and I think he was a little criticized, but I think he's absolutely right in that breakout and the fact that the point at which we look at affordable housing is not affordable for most people. And Ron, you've said it many times, attainable housing, and I agree with that term, that we need to come up with an alternative. So if we move this forward, I would agree that we probably ought to have something in there just, you know, I realize you do site build housing, but I also realize that you can develop it another way and you builders could if you choose to. There's a whole lot of alternative buildings that are going up for houses anymore. You want to call them barn dominiums, that some of them are quite beautiful inside in certain settings and manufactured housing going up. I know a lot of people that live in those. And you can take that to whatever level you want to have that made. Do I think it's as good as onsite? Maybe not, but it probably could be. And so I, if we're going to do this thing, we need to include whatever it takes to put new housing on sites, I think, at some level. And I do like the first and second time home buyer because I think you are dealing with second time home buyers. But, you know, if we don't incentivize them almost equally, will that be a play? I don't know. That doesn't help. That's just what I've kind of, sitting here gleaning that I just think we about have to make a broad stroke of this if we're going to do it.
And just to clarify, this is just the first time they've purchased a home in Reno County, right?
That is correct, yeah.
So they could be a second time home buyer.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, trying to add a lot of different concepts we've talked about throughout the year into one.
So, and the kind of the market I was thinking of was like, you know, people that move here, you know, doctors. I know Hightree Regionalist is bringing in a lot of doctors and, you know, and different professionals like that.
I think too, when, in terms of 5,000, that isn't probably enough for someone to use as a down payment, obviously. But the idea is that this, that the Reno, that the county's incentive is probably not enough to be the only reason someone can buy a house. But we want to be something that can be stacked or just get someone over the edge on doing something, is I think what Randy and I talked about.
I think Randy, you make a good point that, you know, you buy a home, if you're able to buy a home, then if you've lived in it for a while, the price has come up, when you get ready to sell it, you got a little more cash on hand to be able to go out and buy a new home maybe. So limitations, you don't want to limit the potential buyers.
I don't think I'm here to really try and have anybody make any kind of decision today. I'm not that guy. I, you know, I got this information last Thursday from Randy and he offered to get, you know, contact him. And I was just here in case he got brought up. And I wasn't able to get ahold of Deb from the Chamber of Commerce because I really would like to have her ideas. And then I thought she and maybe Randy or whoever and I could get together and talk and see. But there's a lot of good going that direction with the chamber and with the possibility of some assistance with the county. That's all I can really see. I can't, you know, I'm not here to, other than, I just would appreciate anything because at the end of the day, it's going to, it's going to try and help the buyers when they come in. And again, I know that there's a lot of businesses trying to expand and one of the things that they say is the housing. Right now, we have people interested in, you know, one or two of the duplexes to lease. And we're limited on senior housing because we have the Kisselaw Village subdivision where we have patio homes and there's no basements, most of those. And there's an HOA that takes care of that. We're looking at taking part of this area, being just right next to the school. We're looking at taking part of this area, being just right next to the school. We think, um, you know, we, we may be putting some patio homes in there as well as single family homes. But we think we'll have teachers, because that's who we sell to. We probably sold more to teachers than anybody. And we're right next to the Bueller School. So I don't know if you know where, right, Plum Creek School, that's why we called it the Plum Creek subdivision. But we're right to the east of that where we tore a little house down. And the infrastructure should be starting, so we're moving. We're moving no matter what. And I also have another couple interested in the possibility of buying. And they're, you know, I can't let them commit yet, because we're still working on that. But we're really close. But, but we do have buyers, and I'm just not giving them hard numbers yet. So, anyway, I appreciate your help, your time.
Appreciate your comments.
Happy holidays.
And the duplexes, you say they account for that, but that would be if they purchased half the duplex.
That's how it's written, yeah, which I...
Well, I would be on board with that. I think rentals, we shouldn't incentivize anybody's rentals.
I've, uh, I've made notes. I don't know if you guys wanted to take some more stabs at this or do something else today. But I've made notes from all the things, the things I might try and change or revise.
You want to revise it and bring it back?
It's up to you guys, but I can certainly...
I mean, it's not a giant hurry to move this forward, but we want to get it rolling. How do you guys feel about that? Huh? Do these paperwork and...
I mean, I, I mean, I don't know. I mean, so we've, we've got basically thirty people we can, we can help. And so if we make it really broad, then the money will be gone in January. And so, I mean, I, I thought this was tailored to what you guys have said you wanted on things as far as like getting, getting new people into the county. Also helping them purchase a, a new home with the, um, so incentivizing, um, you know, builders to build homes, because there's a... And so, I mean, I, I think this has checked a lot of the boxes. And I think that it's, it's narrow enough to where, um, it's, it's, um, you know, it's not going to be all used up right away, I guess, is, was, was my thoughts. Um, so I, I mean, I think it's fine the way it is.
Are you motioning?
Yeah, I'm motioning to approve it as, as is. We'll see how it goes.
Well, with you saying, I know I need to get another motion on the floor for me to comment. With you saying it doesn't necessarily encapsulate just first time home buyers, I'm kind of more on board that way.
First time to Reno, so that could be a current person who lives in Reno that's never owned a home. Or it could be someone that we're attracting to the county with this.
I'll second your motion, John, to see where it goes. Why are we limiting?
Because we've only got, we've only got thirty... We've only got thirty people we can help. And this, this, like I said, the, the, so, I mean, I, I was pretty well against this until I talked to some bankers and they said, hey, there's not really anything out there in the county to help these, you know, the people that this would help. There's not going to be any, if very, you know, very many, if any duplication on this money with other incentives that the county or that, that are available for people to buy homes in the county. And so this is something that's going to help a different subset of people versus the other stuff we've got out there. So it's not more of the same old, because that's, that, that frustrates me with government is, uh, you know, if you're somebody that gets help, there's twenty different programs for you. But as soon as you make a dollar more than what the requirement is, then there's nothing. And so, um, when I talked to bankers, because I, I was, I was looking for ammunition to come in here to vote against this. And they said, well, no, this is, this is something different. This is something where we don't think there's going to be duplication in this versus some of the other incentives that people could qualify for. And so that, that, that's the reason I'm on board. And you know, I'm not on board with any of these things, so... So, yeah, so that, that's my thought.
Mr. Hirsch, what are we limiting? I'd like to hear.
USDA has some housing programs that their interest rate, it depends upon the income. Are they still available, Jim? Rural housing, USDA rural housing in, in population areas of certain underserved...
It's through finance.
Huh?
It's through finance, if it's through...
It's financing, yes.
And I couldn't tell you. I, 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 I'm trying to think, I don't know if that works in the justice of the answer because of the size. And I'm trying to think of rural housing, infrastructure district, is it...
Used to, used to be have...
Rural housing?
Yeah, it didn't have to be a district.
It's for smaller communities.
Yeah, it was for smaller communities.
You have a comment? Well, there's a motion in a second. We'll take it to a vote and see what happens. Go ahead, Cindy.
Mr. Hirsch?
No. Not good, well, I can't say anymore. Got to move.
Yes.
Commissioner Weitzel?
Yes.
Commissioner Bogner?
No.
Commissioner Freezin?
Exactly.
So we don't have, a two-two vote does not pass, obviously. It has to have the majority to pass.
Why don't you bring it back? I was going to say, why don't we motion the table, let's bring it back to us, rewrite it as you've got your notes, and we'll see where it goes. I just wanted to get it moved along today.
Yeah.
I'll mo, are you motioning? The table and him bringing it back?
Yeah, I'll do that.
Okay. Do I have a second?
I'll second it. I'll second it.
Okay. Further comments? Roll call.
Commissioner Hirsch?
Need that or not?
Commissioner Parks?
Yes.
Commissioner Weitzel?
Yes.
Commissioner Bogner?
Yes.
Yeah, we're going to have a, uh, let's have a break till eleven o'clock. Just a short recess. Call this meeting back to order again. We're a little past eleven, apologize for that, anybody who's tuned in. Seven E, which was six C. And six C was a resolution in front of a planning case twenty, twenty-four, fourteen, to move forward a limited scale solar, I think, that involves Ark Valley and, and some folks' land there, so... Mr. Bogner, you wanted that moved?
Yeah, I did. And the reason I did is, is, uh... I feel our, our current regulations that we have in place are, are very inadequate. And I point out a couple of things that, uh... There's no continuing oversight. We've given you, in this contract, you give them the right to go ahead and build this thing. But, uh... There's nothing in place to ensure that, as, as Mr. Bauer stated, there's nothing to ensure that there'll be money there for closure. There is one site, uh, approval in this contract. And it's for the benefit of Ark Valley that they, they have an environmental site, study, so that they're not getting a piece of property that's, that's got problems. But then you go to the back end of this contract, where it says that they will return it to the, uh... The, when they decommission it, the site will be returned to the same standards as it was when it went in. But how do you prove that? There's nowhere in the contract or anywhere that says you will... The easiest thing would be is to have another environmental site study to prove that they actually complied with the contract. We have, we have no enforcement of the contract and no way to enforce it. We have planning commission members who, who try to equate this with, uh, other types of development. And like, uh, commercial feeding facilities, large scale cattle, confined cattle, uh, facilities, feeding facilities. But there are regulations that they have to comply with all the time. Turn in, uh, one of them is you designate the land where you're going to, to, uh... Spread your natural fertilizers. And you also have to provide to them, uh... Soil tests that prove that you're, you're, you're not, uh... Adding too much fertilizer to any place that can, that can leach. There are studies out there that say we've got chemicals and stuff in those panels that can leach. Heavy metals, arsenic, name a few. And, uh, but there's no way to track if they're there. If, if you had a, a original soil sample to create a baseline and then go forward from there, require it like, like these other types of development, that they would have to every other year or so, have another, another, uh... Soil testing. You've got a comparison of whether you're bringing a new pollution source or you're clean. We don't have to argue about or wonder about whose, whose, uh, thought process is there that, uh, no, there's nothing that's going to be created there. Just let them prove it, like they do in these other types of developments. Nothing like that's there that we actually study what happens as it goes along. We're giving them twenty-five years. We're giving them twenty-five years, and I'm not sure we're not giving them a lot more than twenty-five years, because the way I read this thing, uh, does it end in twenty-five years or, or can they prolong it?
Well, the zoning approval, that would be a private contract with Ark City, but they could approve, they could prolong it once we adopt, once we grant the use, um, so yeah, but just like any other building that would be put out there with a permit, it could just stay there. I have a couple comments when you're finished, Commissioner.
But that, that, that was my thought, and I've been instructed that this is what's, what we have to work off of, and, uh... But I'd sure as heck hate to keep doing things like this with absolutely no oversight of what happens on those developments or, or anything in place to make sure that, that they're adhering to what's going on there. And there wouldn't be any, any pollution or, or, uh, like closing costs at the end. The contract calls for them to, uh, within so many days, I like the way it is, that a way, when they quit producing electricity, you have to start closing down within a year, you've got so many days to do it, but then if you haven't conformed to the contract, you ought, you can ask for a, for an extension, and there's nothing related to that extension that, that's gonna cost them any money or, or for, for not complying. That's the way you get compliance, is, is you put certain caveats in place that, yeah, you can get an extension, but you, you missed your deadline, to get the extension, you need, you need a daily fine until you're in compliance with your contract, and we have nothing to, to force them to comply with the contract, and that's what scares the heck out of me.
You done? I've got a few comments too, but I'll let you go, Patrick, if you would.
I just wanted to kind of remind the commissioners, as we've talked about solar zoning and just creating zoning changes in general, when you're creating the new regulations, you have, you meet with what's called legislative authority, which means when you're making the regulations up, when you're creating them, you can put whatever you need to put in them, you have a lot of latitude. You've gone through that process with limited scale solar and approved a regulation scheme for a limited scale solar, uh, what's happened now is, based on those regulations that were approved, there was an application that was, uh, that applied based on the existing regulations, the planning commission reviewed, you know, basically looked at the regulations that were approved and the application and matched up whether or not they fit, and wrote this report that's before you. So now you're meeting, you're using what's called judicial authority, whereas commissioners, your job is not to, is not to review the entire regulation scheme, but really just to review this application and report and compare it to the regulations that you've already approved, and if it matches up, you know, you're, you're just here to kind of measure and say, yes, this is what we approved as regulations, and this is, this is how it matches up. So you are limited in your authority, I just wanted to kind of make that clear, because the people applying at that point can say, well, these regulations were in place, we feel like we met them, um, we feel like we might be entitled to a permit. Don, Mark, is that, yeah, so?
Well, that was my feelings, it was a majority approval, we moved them forward, everybody was cognizant of the decisions that we made, but my concern, if we were to try to push this kind of an agenda forward, is that it's not regulations or oversight at, at that point, well, it is regulations, and in the future, I want to caution that we would, we create some things that can stifle the growth of some of these things that could actually be beneficial for the community, we obviously moved this forward with the thoughts that this would be helpful for the community to defray some costs for the Highlands or wherever it's going, and, uh, back to, and I'll probably be hated for this, back to the, uh, the pollution part of it, most people know that, that solar power came out of California more than anywhere years ago, if there's one place in the, in the whole United States that's absolutely overregulated for pollution, that would be California, and if California has them almost everywhere out there, you can pretty much bet your bippy that it's, it is, it is fine, it's not doing anything wrong, or they would put them places out of business. I have no conclusive evidence, personally, I'd like to speak that there's pollution that come off of these, there's every bit as much pollution over the years as rolled off farm fields right into the waterways, that's rolled off industry right into the waterways, and the, the, the old-time practices probably did more damage than, than anything that ever went on in farming. Those things have been changed, and, and I appreciate that they have been, but where do we go, then do we start dipping and sampling farm ground whether it's polluting, we look for it for nutrients, but we don't look for it for pollution, and probably should, and I love farmers, and don't get me wrong if you're listening to this, but this is a slippery slope, uh, when, when we pass something and say it's okay and then we back up, you're gonna end up just like you did with the wind if we ain't careful, and so I don't think that we want to go there, in my opinion, I'm just stating that, and, and that's kind of my position on this, I think we passed it, we give authority to the planning commission, they've wrote a resol, or wrote what we voted on, and now they've, they've sent it to us from the planning, I, I see no reason not to pass this, so always be quiet. Any further comments?
Yeah, I mean, would, would it be okay to add, uh, a requirement for another test, um, at the, at the end of this? You know, when they do decommission the panels, if they're, you know?
When you pass the regulations, that would have been a really good time to have added additional testing, because then everybody would be clear on that requirement, starting to add new requirements that are fairly gonna be, and that would be a fairly extensive and expensive requirement to add at this point, would probably subject us, I think Commissioner Parks mentioned the wind situation, that was a lawsuit that they kind of got sued over, um, that, that's potentially available if we add a lot of requirements.
Right, well, and, and my thought was, we do have the requirement that they return it to the soil, or, you know, to return it the way it was, and so, you know, I mean, that's, that's a valid point, what, what does that involve?
You mean if they decommissioned this, removed their equipment, had to return it back, I assume site, the looking, the way it did before they started?
Yeah, that, I, I think it's written, it's, it's in terms of the contours of the land and the, um, sorry, yeah, I'm thinking of runoff and erosion, sorry, erosion was the word I was looking for.
Yeah, so if it's farm ground, it'd be returned back just like its farm ground, if it's grass, it'd be returned that, and to, and the problem is with this is the regulations have been adopted by the county commission, and so now some applicant is applied for it based on these regulations. To make any changes in the regulations, then it would go back before the planning and zoning commission to see if they want to go down that avenue, and if so, another public hearing to change the regulations for, for anything future, but as of right now, Ark Valley is making an application based on the regulations that are in place, passed by resolution from the Board of County Commissioners.
Well, not to mention, they had an agreement that they would wait until we passed regulation, and they've been holding off a year to build this, and so I think, Don, you didn't state your name, by the way, Don Britton?
Don Britton, Director of Public Works.
Everybody knows who you are.
Well, no, and, and that, that was my question, was, um, was, you know, how, how do we determine, but it sounds like it's just like a visual thing, not, not a, not a soil thing, is that, is that?
Well, there's such things that first concrete on the surface, they have to, they have to remove everything just like it was before, so, just like it was prior to the...
But not necessarily the soil quality?
No.
Okay.
Not, not checking for contaminants, if that's what you mean, they can't put a bunch of rock in there and then leave it and say that's farm ground.
Okay, thank you.
It's my understanding that the planning commission right now is working on regulations for, uh, commercial solar, and there's a lot of things that will have to be talked about, for instance, this is one of those times where they need to put in there probably soil test before, soil test afterward. This is kind of interesting, because actually Ark Valley has made a contract with today's Solar, or whatever their company name is, to own, manage, and operate that solar array. So it's, it's a little bit different than, than some of things, and I wonder, you know, I, I hope that the due diligence was done, either whoever was supposed to do it with Today's Power, Inc., to find out their due diligence on their financial capabilities. Now, I don't know whose was Ark Valley's responsibility, or the planning commission's responsibility to, to find out their financial capabilities, because if they just gave it to Tim Buck Two without checking financial capabilities, they could just walk away from this thing, without any repercussions at all. So I'm just, with that contract being between Ark Valley and Today's Power, where does that responsibility lie, that's?
For cleanup, for site clean, when, when you got, when we began this whole solar journey, we carved out the smaller, the smaller scale utilities, and the theory at the time was, even when in terms, in terms of cleanup, like we're discussing in terms of surface cleanup, and also if it went, it'd just be less, because this is, is I think ten acres, I, I forget, is it eighty, yeah, ten acres, this, this is using, this one's using seven point eight acres, the problem you get when you make the regulations, you make regulations that are gonna apply to everybody, and you don't know, you don't know who the participants are gonna be at that time, so it could be people that you know, and it could be new entrants, and so this is some name we don't recognize, but the regulations apply to everybody equally.
Any other comments? Well, if not, I'm gonna step in here and motion that we pass what was once on the consent agenda, uh, this permit for approval for building the solar field, resolution twenty, twenty-four, I don't know what it was, but... Fifty-two, okay.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? Not, roll call.
Commissioner Hirst?
Yes.
Commissioner Parks?
Yes.
Commissioner Weitzel?
Yes.
Commissioner Bogner?
No. Motion passes three to one. Well, moving along, county administrator, would you like to report?
Okay, I have the monthly reports in the packet for the health department, human resources, IT, facilities, public works, solid waste, and youth services, any questions on anything in that in the monthly reports? Also have the financial report, this is through November, the month of November, just kind of showing high level of where we're at financially, everything's looking pretty good, revenues are coming in good, expenditures are about where they're, I guess, projected to be, I didn't have anything specific when I reviewed these that stood out any more than normal, any questions on those? And then my other comment, I was just going to let you know that Dave Johnson kind of mentioned, but for the EMS building on Fifth Avenue, um, Hutton will be here next, next week, so on December thirtieth at, I think it's, it's in the afternoon, we'll have a meeting, a kickoff, where Dave will be there, our new facilities director, myself, and if one, if a commissioner wants to be there, or two commissioners on the building committee wants to be part of that, I'll send you the calendar invite, but that's next Monday afternoon. And then I'm going to be taking the two commissioners elects around to more departments this afternoon to kind of meet various directors and see the departments, that's all I had.
Commissioner Bogner, anything, any comments for you?
Not really, I, I didn't, I didn't attend anything too big anywhere, the Quad County deal, I guess, was the last thing we attended, and it was, uh, it was a nice and good meeting, we learned a whole lot about emergency preparedness and nine-one-one and what should and shouldn't be done, but, uh... In that discussion, some things came up that have been in the, in the papers for some of our other colleagues in other counties, and, uh, we don't want to get ourselves in those kind of positions.
Mr. Ernst?
Don, the tour of the flower mill, I had no idea that, that they made that much flour over at Newton at all.
Under so many brand names.
Yeah, private label maker. I want to give a special thank you to all of the friends and neighbors that came out, and even those who, who didn't even know Gary, this long weekend, uh, and their offer to, to help in the search for our friend and neighbor Gary Foster, uh, tough deal, but I think a special thank you needs to go out to those folks who spent their time this weekend, from daylight to past dark, to see if I can find Gary, that's all.
Commissioner Weitzel?
So, um, so I'll go back to what I meant to bring up earlier, um, so, um, six C we approved today, um, funding some outside agencies, and, um, I really think that funding outside agencies should be moved to the budget rather than, uh, funding the different departments, and then the departments funding outside agencies, so I don't know if that's something that future commissions would be interested or want, but I know we spend a lot of time looking at outside agencies when we fund them, and then, you know, when we, uh, but when a department gives money to them, because there are some things on there that I didn't necessarily agree with, um, and so, um, I just, I, I, I don't like the separation there, and so hopefully in the future, maybe that can be moved to part of the budget, but, um, you know, um, rather than, as a pass-through, but that, that was just my thought on that. Um, of course, Christmas is in two days, um, you know, Santa Claus will be very busy, uh, there's been a lot of good people here in Reno County, um, you know, uh, same thing I always say with a lot of these holidays, get out and, and talk to your neighbors, you know, if you got a, if you got a neighbor that doesn't have any family in town, you know, maybe invite them over to dinner, or, um, you know, make them a plate and send it over, um, because that's how you build communities, that's how you build neighborhoods, that's how you build wanting, um, to stay in an area is by having people you can talk to and having people that you know, and so the more you can do to make your neighbors feel part of your community, the better experience you will have, um, just in life, is, is my opinion, you know, do the right thing, get to know your neighbors, um, help, help people around you, and, uh, everybody have a Merry Christmas.
Thanks, John. Uh, set in orientation this past week with the two new commissioners, Commissioner Hurst and I was there, um, I'm sure very enlightening, and it will be as it goes on, it's, it's certainly, I reflected back, it was for me, a lot of things I've learned over, over the course of the last couple of years that I had no idea heading into this position, and so, uh, I wish them well and, and your journey this afternoon, that'll, that'll be a great thing to continue on with them. Stopped by on the service awards, had a chance to witness that again this year, um, it, it is, uh, for those on the outside, you know, I've been to a lot of organizations that I've worked for, there is a lot of, as Don stated this morning, family, uh, a lot of people become like a family in the county, and I kind of tried to state that the other day, that it's, it's obvious, the people don't stay here for fifteen, twenty, thirty years and beyond, uh, that doesn't feel that same environment, I hope the county can continue to foster that environment and, and move forward with that for the years to come as well, and I don't really have anything else other than Merry Christmas and Happy New Year to everybody that's listening and everybody that's here. everybody that's listening and everybody that's here. Look forward to time with your families and, and, uh, certainly I, you know, remember the reason for the season. That's all I've got. At that point, we'll adjourn the meeting then.